We'll call this commissioner's meeting to order. Please join us real quick.
I pledge allegiance to the law, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. We will start with the minutes of the November 4th meeting. Is there any additions or corrections?
I think approved.
Second. We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the November 4th meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Okay, first on our agenda today is Bill Mackey with our CCMG.
Assistance for the... You're saying it's the same, Tracy. It's about the every year the Butler Fairman does for the inspections and the applications, cost, and all the design for community crossings. It's pretty much standard what we always do with them.
Okay. I don't have a copy of that, Bill.
I got it. It's signature on the last page. It's just the standard where they do all the work preparing for it. Then they'll do the minimal inspections when it happens next year, hopefully.
Yeah, I hope so. Okay, so this is for 2026, provided that we are awarded.
Is this for the calculation, everything we're doing now?
Yes. Sorry to interrupt. We're sorry to interrupt. It's completed. Incident.
Oh. Okay, application has been made.
If you don't get the money, then the inspection part won't happen. That's probably only it, because this is all the work they've done for the application to be filed for this year. They called 26 money. You know, you file now, but it's actually 26 money.
The call next year's, I think, in July, Jane.
It'll be an earlier call.
And there's only one call coming around now.
Yeah, when they moved everything up several months, that kind of put the hurry up on everything.
So it's not going to be in January? So I guess sometimes the next month or so you can decide probably what you're going to be doing for 2026 or 2027.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
Not yet.
Okay, we need a motion to approve. Here we have.
Second.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the contract agreement with Butler Fairman and Seaford for 2026 Community Crossings Matching Grant Program Assistance. All in favor, signify by the say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Sign this for you right now, Bill.
All you have.
Okay, all right.
All right.
All right, thanks, Bill. Sheriff Jones.
I think it was added. I sent you guys an email about a base radio for the jail. Once we went over to the women's center, and there are certain spots in there where you just can't get out on your radio, and it doesn't reach the control room. And it's because we're working off of portables, and we've not had a base radio in the control room for 15 years. I talked with our radio guy, and he seems to think that the base radio will help out with communication. And it's something that we're going to have to get before we can stick people over there, because, of course, things can happen if a situation happens in a certain area, and the officer can't get out to the radio, on the radio, to get help. So I think the quote that I got was around $4,000 for a base radio. Hopefully, that solves the problem.
This would be a base radio for the women's pursuit?
It would be in the control room of the current jail, and that would make the portables that we have, they would be able to communicate, because the base radio is a little more powerful. So the radios in the women's center would be able to communicate to the control room in the current jail.
And it's been a while since you've had any replacement on this, right?
It would... We used to have a base radio when the jail was dispatching to road deputies 20 years ago, 25 years ago. But we got it. It's no longer in use. Somebody got rid of it over the years. So we've been working off of portables, and that's it. The other option was a repeater system. He was guessing that's going to cost about $15,000. So this is a lot more cost efficient, and I think it will solve the problem.
Of course, you've got money in your budget to pay for this, don't you?
Yeah, the commissioner does. Yes, I do.
No. I was thinking of the jail budget.
We could move some, I mean, it'd take some moving money around. We've got some money in different places that we might go to move a little bit around, but I don't have a line item for radios. We really don't have time to apply for a grant, so.
So they think this will solve the problem?
That's what VEI, that's who we get our radios from. That's what they said. Jeff Griffin back here is the expert, so.
If it come in at $4,000, I'd probably go with it. If everything I'm looking at is 50 and 60 thousand, so.
You just stay sitting there.
Yeah, no problem. I'll move it through.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve this quote and purchase of radio equipment for the jail in the amount of $3,989.23. Is there any further question?
Does that have a base antenna on the jail or on that building to receive it, or probably that's all?
Yeah, I don't know a lot about radios. I mean, you push the button, you talk. Again, that's where the expert back here.
What channel's going to be on that, Zach? Is that going to be their internal channel?
Internal jail, just the jail frequency, yeah.
Well, it doesn't have to go very far.
No, no.
But it has to penetrate a lot of concrete.
That's our problem.
Yeah. Any further question?
Nope.
All in favor, signify by the say aye. Three ayes, Jane.
All right, and we had our final training yesterday. All the jail staff on the new women's center. Thor got everybody down there except for the HBAC people. I think Josh is going to do that sometime in the near future. It seems like we're getting really close. Only issue that we had, Secures, Secures got fixed it, but there was a button in the control room and a couple of other things, but they fixed that. And now the only issue that we've got is there's a shower that's not draining properly. Just Thor said they were going to look at that, so hopefully we're about ready. I know Tracy had talked about having an open house at some point, and hopefully we can do that, and then start moving the 40 females we got in jail right now.
Yeah, we've got fewer and fewer items to clear up now than we did before. Now, Ron Bass will be over there at 3:00. He's going to monitor the firearm system.
Yes, that was something the state fire inspector wanted, so we'll get that taken care of. And then there's a few other minor things that we've got to move around or take down, but once we get that, we should be, get the blessing from the fire chief and the inspector and start moving people. It's getting there.
Yeah.
Took a little more than expected, but we're getting there.
Yeah, it has taken a while.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks. County Recorder, Lisa Witt.
Hello. I'm on the agenda today because my office will be traveling to Fisher's tomorrow morning for the entire day for training on our program CSI. We've got it posted for the public, and it's, I've sent it over to the news examiner and everything, but wanted to come here and formally present that to you guys, since I didn't get my get to the last meeting. So I guess I'm asking for permission on camera to post tomorrow for training.
I'll make the prayer.
Second. We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the recorder's office closing all day tomorrow for training. All in favor, signify by the say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane.
Then a couple of other things. I have been working with Tina from US Imaging. She is, USImaging is the company that we use to scan all the deeds. They were in here a few months back, and some of you all went over and seen them to see the process. They sent us over the raw image, so that's what I've given you. That's the untouched. They've not cleaned it up or anything. We are actually using that in office right now. If somebody calls, I can put in the deed book page and pull that up for people and get their documents, so that's really nice. But we're working on the second phase. It's been a little, I don't want to say it's been a problem, but, so, when instrument numbers were put into this new system, they only allotted for nine numbers, and some of the instrument numbers are longer, so we've been having to work some kinks with that. But I'm working with her, and we're getting that done. The ladies in the office continue to work on the miscellaneous books, cleaning up, scanning those, and so that's going really well. I've also been talking with Jill Lisa about gathering information regarding a grant. I had sent you guys over an email on that for the National Endowment for the Humanities Award. It would allow us to get up to $350,000, hopefully finish that project if we decide to go with that. I have to get some letters of recommendation. I'm sure the county historian would be supportive in helping me get that done, so that we can get all of those documents scanned and taken care of. And then a couple of other just small facts. During October, we had 32 people sign up for Property Watch, and we had several inquiries about Equity Protect. That is the free program that you guys approved for me to use a couple of years ago to allow people to monitor what's going on with their property and deeds. Equity Protect is the program that has a smaller fee, but they do, they do the same thing. And then, in addition to Property Watch, Docs Pop is also the place where our documents will go, once we have all of those images, and people can go online and look up their deeds, and they can print it off from home. We still get the money, so they're not coming in, going through the books, using our paper and stuff like that. But this year, off of Docs Pop, we have put $15,427 into the records perpetuation fund, so that'll grow even more the more information we get out there online. Anything for me?
Nope. Thanks for the report, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And good luck tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
IT Director, Michael King. Michael, you have some bids for some equipment here?
Got the BIS Digital quotes. I tried to see if I could find another vendor, but nobody ever got back with me. But it is kind of a specialized thing, and we already have BIS as a vendor for the courts. There's a quote there for both Superior and Circuit. They're both actually the same amount, $14,769 for each quarter. That's the microphone, mixer, recorder, or some cabling if needed, and then the labor to install it and set it all up. So that'll, handles the, basically goes from the microphones into the system, and then we've already got the actual computer and the software that records all the court nonsense that goes on. I mean, the talk and stuff in the courtrooms that the lawyers do, but like Jeff would be familiar with, for the transcriptions and everything that goes on in the courtrooms. But right now, the system with the age, they've improved its stuff so much that the system now, it works, but the newer systems are so much better with the software and algorithms in there, that they can much better filter out noise in the rooms, static, air conditioning, coughs, chatter in the, squeaks in the chairs, stuff like that that goes in the background that right now get caught by the microphones that we, that have to be filtered out by somebody doing the transcription or doing a recording. You know, so that's all stuff that's in there right now, which isn't really a big deal as far as storage space, but when you're going back and trying to deal with a recording for an appeal, and you're paying somebody to type all that out for a transcription can be, you know, a waste of time. So, but also, we have to keep these things for the record, so that's obviously a big deal. We have to keep these things clean for the record, and we have to be able to supply them when requested. So, so along with the fact that it needs to be clean, the equipment's starting to fail from age, because these things were initially purchased when the courthouse was redone. So that's what, 14 years now? 15 years?
2004, is that what you mean?
Well, they were, they were at least 15 years since, before I started, so I don't, maybe they were done again before that, between those times, but it's at least 15 years for this equipment, for the audio. So the control boards, like the one that's in here by Jane, are not functioning anymore, so the only way you can turn the volumes up and down is through the computer instead of through the little control panels like they're supposed to be. So those no longer function the way they used to. So you can't get parts for them, so there's no way to fix them besides buying a whole new system and salvage it. So that's obviously another problem. So just that one piece alone is almost $5,000, that's $4,800 right there. So I recommend that we get this and get it ordered. I doubt we'll get it installed before the end of the year, but if I get this approved, I can go ahead and get it invoiced, and I can get it off this year's line item, which I had already, I've been working on this since May, and trying to get that, get these quotes and back and forth, and the company's been dragging their feet. I've gone through a rep and a different rep than their supervisor, so.
It seems like I recall us doing an upgrade in the Circuit Court a few years ago, and I know that wasn't a total system like this.
It was, we changed which company we were with. We were with FTR Gold before, and we upgraded the system for the computer, because their computer was older. So we didn't change out the audio equipment, we changed out the computer and their, the software.
Okay.
Is what we did in Circuit. But that was five years ago, six?
It's probably been five years ago. So if we make this investment, how long do you think that will take us?
Well, the audios have lasted the entire time I've been here, and I'm going on 12, been here 12 years, so, I mean, it's possible it may last eight years, 10 years, I don't know. For that Dante piece of equipment, that's the stuff that stays in the rack and controls the audio. I mean, I have no idea how long they last. They may last 10 years, they may last 12. I honestly couldn't tell you.
Well, I'm going to assume there is a warranty on this.
Most electronics come with anywhere from a one to three-year warranty. The, we are paying the annual onsite, or the annual onsite support that they're charging that right here says $1,300 includes hardware replacement. So I'm not, I assume that includes the hardware that they're going to be installing, so assuming we keep paying that every year, I would assume that they would cover the hardware.
Okay. Have you got an appropriation to cover this?
I had planned on getting this this year, and it was something I had planned on all year, so.
Was it for the hearing impaired or something that we had done?
That was one of the things we had done last year, yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to remember.
Replace the hearing impaired.
Okay, so it wasn't like this is totally different?
It's totally different, yeah.
Okay. So we have them all up to date on everything they need there?
Trying to be, yeah.
Looks like it's only a 90-day warranty that I've seen in the back. You don't know anything else other than that.
I think the 90-day warranty is from them, is from BIS. I meant the, most electronics come with like a year warranty from the manufacturers. Yeah, the limited warranty is from BIS, so if we have a problem, BIS will cover for 90 days. But a lot of different manufacturers, like HP and stuff, usually have things for like a year. It just depends on what the, you know, it varies depending on what the manufacturer has, so I can't tell you what Dante's are and stuff like that.
And this is your first time working with these, this company?
No, BIS, we've worked with them for, since I've been here.
Okay, so you already know them, okay.
We have them in the interview room at Police Department, we have it in the interview at the Sheriff's Department, we've had them in both courtrooms.
That's good. I make a motion, we need to approve your request for the upgrade, the sound in both courtrooms.
Second. We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve quote and purchase of recording audio equipment for the Circuit Court and the Superior Court, BIS Digital, in the amount of $14,769.69 each. Is there any further question? All in favor, signify by the say aye. Three ayes, Jane. So you'll probably order this stuff this week?
I'll get the quotes off, signed quotes off to them, and then I'll get, they get them in the process of the order, and they give you the invoice as quickly as possible so I can get it submitted, just give you the one signature on each one of those. When you guys get done for today, I'll get them off to them. And we'll go from there. Anything else for me?
What do you want?
Just your one signature on the sign.
On the top or the bottom?
Wherever it says sign, signature. I can't wait till you guys get done with the meeting. You don't have to sign it now.
Well, if you don't mind, you can take care of this a little bit.
Yeah, just when you guys get done.
All right.
I just don't need the one copy, so. Anything else for you guys? Okay, I'll get back to it.
Thanks, Mike. 911 Director, Jeff Griffin. Jeff, do you have anything today?
I do. Just wondering where we're at on the job description and the advertisement for my replacement.
It's right there.
That's not what I wanted to hear, Dale.
You get the gentleman set up for the next meeting?
I do, yes. I have him set up for December 2nd, Barry Ritter. He'll be here for that meeting.
And he's, if I understood it right, he's going to help redo the job description?
Yeah, his, his function is to help with the job description, as well as analyze the whole, hold that, the 911 center, and give us direction where it needs to go. That's, that's his whole function. And obviously, he's done all kinds of these, so he has things to compare to, to be able to do that. So yeah, I have him scheduled for December 2nd.
That ought to be helpful, Jeff.
I, I think it will be very helpful, both from, from the job description standpoint and from the 911 center itself. I think it'll be a good thing.
Yeah, I know that I certainly wouldn't be qualified to write that job description. I know a little bit, but not a lot, you know?
And I mean, just in the short time I've been here, I've, I've realized how much more needs to go into that job description, because there is a lot more than this in that original job description.
Isn't that always the case?
Yes, sir, it is. That's how you get people.
Right, yeah.
Yes, sir.
You tell them it's a real easy job, and then they find out later that it's not.
That is correct. That is correct. The only other thing, I got a couple of updates here. My part-time people, I got seven hired now. I just recently hired a young man from, he has prior dispatch at Decatur County. He's trained for two weeks, and he's already in a seat, and he's working my third shift for me, so that's, that's working out real good, and he's, he's doing really good. Everybody else is working out well, so that should alleviate some of my open shifts and my overtime. Of course, tomorrow's a new day, you know, so, but right now, we're set with that, but he's working out real well. I also included just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. It's not, neither of these are urgent. The first thing is the power phone update, Total Response and Power Phone. That is for our EMD, so that when the dispatchers are working a CPR, for example, right now, because of our, of the power phone software we have, which is from 2016, I believe they told me, they have to go back and forth between Power Phone and the Flex software, and then try to intermingle those two. Obviously, with the new upgrade, that's going that's gonna, that's gonna bring those two, two items of software together so that it, they primarily work in the EMD software and it pushes it into flex. So that information is available in the mobile product as well as in our CAD comments as well, uh, for that. Um, as you know, nothing is very cheap. Um, so right now, the quote I got was forty-five thousand, five ninety-nine for that plus, uh, sixty-eight, sixty-six eighty-nine a year. Um, and that stuff is going up. But again, I guess, again, that's not something that, um, we're in desperate need of. Uh, but obviously it would provide a lot better service to our community so that they don't have to go back and forth for that, um, so that they can see those instructions for CPR and those kind of things as well. Now that itself is dispatch center focused. That would help the dispatchers primarily. Um, the other thing that we're look, I was looking at is, is called rapid notifications. And rapid notifications is a build-in, um, notification system, um, that we're all doing manually right now. Um, we, we're currently using Civic, uh, to notify our first responders and also we use Civic to notify the public about, um, road closures and school closings and, um, you know, emergency weather services and that kind of stuff as well. The rapid notification is would automa, automatically do some of that. So for example, when we send fire EMS to a call, our dispatchers currently have to remember to send that Civic alert to our first responder, to fire EMS primarily. Um, with rapid notifications, it would automatically do that. So once we, once we put in the address, once we put the information in, when we set that, when we assign an agency to that, it automatically sends that out. So, uh, again, that would, in my opinion, help all the agencies that are involved because we are, I'll be the first in that, we do forget to send those out sometimes because of everything else going on and we do forget that. So that would make that automatically. Um, that, um, and again, this could possibly takes, take the place of the Civic product. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I'm still researching that. Um, but, um, this is, um, all agencies focused and it forty-three grand, forty-three thousand, six oh two, and then it's fifty-five seventy-one a year. And that's, that's through Moller Row and it's for all, uh, agencies. So, um, again, all that stuff's expensive, but I just wanna make you aware of some things I'm looking at and hopefully that, um, and I know we can't, money doesn't grow on trees. But those are things that we need to really be looking forward at least in the next couple of years, um, if not sooner.
Well, it's something to plan for, for sure.
Yes. And that's, that's what I'd like to do is get it, hopefully we can get it in that and I'll start watching for grants and stuff to, to hopefully we can help out some of that as well.
What's the Civic contract of, do you know?
I do not know. That's what I'm, uh, she hasn't, they haven't got back with me yet to see when, cause that's, that's my main concern is when that's up, what we're paying for that now and then what that comparison's gonna be.
It was similar, wasn't it? Just a little bit more for that?
Um, I, to be honest with Tracy, I don't know. I haven't got anything back from her. So I, I have no idea of what we're, what we're paying for that, for Civic. Then the only other couple of things I have is, uh, I am getting ready to write employee bet, employee evaluations, um, which is a requirement for the handbook. Um, I'm gonna do that before, before, um, the next, um, director comes in. Hopefully I'll hope those done by the first of January, um, or the end of January. Let's say January. Um, so we'll have those and it'll help. And he or she, whoever takes my place, is gonna have those to look at and be able to look at those. Um, the last thing I have is what's the policy on cameras in, uh, surveillance cameras in the workplace? My, my reason being is that I have a door in the dispatch center. I would like, it's not gonna be monitoring employees, but it's gonna be monitoring who's coming in and out of that door. Cause I was advised by the state police that I have to have a sign in sheet for that. And it would be a good idea to have a video backup of that sign in sheet specifically for IDAX.
I don't recall reading anything specific to that. Now, we've got one expert in the room on the handbook.
Okay.
That's Jane here. She knows it from front to back.
I don't know that the handbook addresses surveillance cameras.
Yeah, I don't, I.
God, I don't think.
Yeah, I looked through it and I couldn't find anything about it.
I mean, we have them like throughout this building on all the various doors and hallways and I went and see why we couldn't have one.
I, I don't see anything objectionable about it. Cause you know, it's, we know what his purpose is.
Correct.
There is some areas we are not allowed to put numbers.
Right.
Actually, but.
Right. And, and this would be, this would be focused on the door away from the console. So there would be no, uh, danger of IDAX information or anything like that, uh, being visible in, in the, the screen that we're viewing.
Because that is the city's building. We should probably ask the city before we put something in.
Right. I, yeah, I kinda assumed that, but I wanted to make sure it was okay, um, cause obviously it's a county workspace. Cause we've leased it, correct?
I don't know if, I don't know what that agreement is. I don't have.
Yeah. But obviously we would have to get with the city to make sure it's okay that we put that in there.
I mean, if we've leased it, then we theoretically might not, but I don't know why we wouldn't wanna communicate with the city and make sure it's okay.
I don't know why anyone would object to it.
Okay. And is it okay if I go ahead and research that and see if I can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I have. Any questions to me?
I did.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right.
Okay. For the Highway Department, Chris Gedinger, do you have anything you need to talk about today?
Uh, I don't necessarily need to, I guess, but, um, I've been out, been doing some paving. Um, got across six hundred north, a whole mile stretch of it up there. So we have a feller that's pretty happy with us now. He was upset with us. So.
That was a very big improvement up there.
Yeah. I don't know if you've been across it, but it's, it's come out very well. Uh, and we just finished Friday. So we kinda got caught in the middle of the snowstorm there for some of it, but delayed a day or two. But we got it done. Um, went on across east of Midville Road and caught a couple of patches headed towards Madlo Park. That was bad. So, uh, quite sure we were out of money to, to do that, but we went ahead and done it. So, yeah. If we get in trouble for doing too much, I'll, I'll take that. I got big shoulders. It's all right. But, um, done some berman, uh, just yesterday was out berman roads. Um, put a few cans in the last couple of weeks here. Got some more work to do probably this week now with the frame. So, just stuff like that. Getting ready for winter. Got some work to work on there to get ready, but, um, we'll be, we'll get there. So, got a few less guys gonna be in trucks this winter, just so everybody knows. Might take a little longer to get some things cleared off, but we'll get, we'll get there best we can. So, it's just how it goes.
Well, I'm calling for no snow this winter. So.
Okay. I'll, I'll be more than glad. That's it. So, yeah. It's what it is. We'll deal with it when we get there. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Um, Bill, did you have anything else that was, okay. Mr. County Attorney, do you have anything?
Um, not yet. I have a couple of things on the cemetery ordinance.
Okay. Anybody have any mail we want to share?
Brad.
Yep, Brad back there.
Brad Coulter.
We'll get to him.
How?
He was under new business. Sorry.
Um, you have any old businesses? Okay. Next up then, under new business, uh, our EDG Director, Brad Coulter is here with a resolution supporting energy and industrial development. Brad?
Good to see you. Howdy. Um, I have a rev, resolution before you and I'll give you a little background just so everybody knows. The Indiana Economic Development Corporation is asking county, county government to take sides on the issue of data centers and, um, new innovative power solutions. And, uh, a lot of counties are saying no out of hand or not responding to it in general because they've had a bad solar project or a wind project or something that's raised the ire of the community. And since we haven't had that so much here, um, I wanna ask you to support this resolution and I have a couple of reasons. Uh, one of those, I've been running around trying to get us noticed all over the place and I think that supporting this resolution will get us noticed. Um, we have gotten a reputation at times for saying no to things that, uh, maybe we shouldn't have or some people may feel differently. But looking back on some things that we said no to, it kinda hurt us over the long, in the big picture. This would be the county declaring that we're open minded to these things. And I think it will, uh, open some eyes and maybe get people to look at us a little bit different. And, um, you know, data centers, they, I always tell the story about the nine hundred dollar VCR. Remember when in nineteen seventy-five when VCRs came out and they were nine hundred bucks and they didn't work? But ten years later, they cost fifty bucks and they worked great. Well, data centers started out that way too. And so did a lot of these power, innovative power solutions. You have better technology today, safer, cleaner. Data centers now sort of operate in a closed loop where they were, before they were open loop where they were always pumping water into and out of the ground. And now they work more like a radiator on a car where you fill them up and they contain themselves. So I know a little bit about groundwater contamination from my past career and I feel comfortable with the technology. So the other downside to data centers, they don't employ a lot of people and they do have a pretty good size footprint. But the tax implications of a data center could be big for the county because there's a lot of, of value to the equipment that sits inside of those. And in the beginning, uh, a lot of times abatements were given, big, long abatements for that equipment. And now, not so much. So if we were to get an opportunity to have one, I think it would be a huge tax revenue for the county and city. But this doesn't get us a project, but it does say that we're open minded to it. And that's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, I asked, uh, well, that's, that's a good way of explaining it, Brad. Um, this, this resolution certainly doesn't obligate us to anything that does make a statement that we are open to proposals. And, um, especially on, um, well, things like, um, data centers and the newer electric generation, uh, technology that they're coming in with. Certainly, we are dealing with economic currency of the future. And all this stuff is gonna be here whether we like it or not. So if we can, if we can advantage our community with it, fine. But you don't know until you hear something from somebody, you know? That's all I'll say about it. I'll move to approve it.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a, a motion Dale second to Tracy to approve Resolution twenty-five R dash eight, a resolution of the Fayette County Board of Commissioners supporting energy and industrial development in Fayette County. Any further questions? All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. There you go.
Thank you very much. If I have any other questions for me while I'm standing here? Thank you.
Just a couple of things if I may. Um, Thursday we have our area planning commission meeting and I'll probably advise them that it's time to start looking at ordinance. I think you guys passing that, um, will be some pretty strong, um, kind of influence on what kind of ordinance they start drafting, if that makes sense. Um, but I don't love the idea of not having anything on the books to regulate or anything like that. I mean, I think there needs to, but, um, but your guys' kind of idea of, hey, we're for these will be good and beneficial for them to draft that ordinance if you guys are involved in that.
Yeah. Well, I really, I hadn't given that any thought, but it's been not a surprise to have, um, regulatory ordinances in place. But it's gonna be hard to hit that target this right because you know, there's no way to predict what might come down.
Some counties, if this is kind of, it, it, who knows what this will turn into. It's kind of, from a distance observation, it feels like it was similar to, you know, solar where everybody was for it. Then a couple of projects started coming and then everybody kinda had their own opinions. And so I would expect this to, if, if other communities that I've seen, I would expect this to get a lot of attention. So it's something you guys should definitely be thinking about moving forward. But passing this is kind of a good way for me to guide the APC on where the commissioners' heads are at at this point in time.
Okay. Sound all right to you two?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Jeff?
Nope.
Okay. Um, we have a couple of representatives here today from the Cemetery Commission to talk about a proposed, uh, county ordinance regarding cemeteries.
Um. Um, I'm Donna Schrader and I'm a member of the Cemetery Commission and, um, county historian. And, um, we did kind of work on that, Jeff.
Has it changed from, what do you mean work on it?
We, we made some modifications.
Since last Wednesday?
Since it was given to Jane and Dale.
Okay.
Um, cause there was a lot of, um, notations in there about township trustees. They have no interest in this at all now. Um, so what's been happening with this is, um, as far as we know, well, we can't find the original ordinance that created the Cemetery Commission. It has to be in the same timeframe when the cemetery tax was levied. But we just haven't found it. We don't have it in our records. Cause you didn't find it, right? Um, we did find, well, Jared found, um, and that's in your original thing, the way the, the offices were, um, put in place where they were three year terms. Now they're five year terms. That was amended at some time. Um, and we get one new appointment each year during those five years and there are five members. So it, it keeps us flowing pretty well in case there's a lapse and anybody wants to be on board. But, so there are a lot of things to look at. But I recently hosted, um, a group of county historians at the museum. And what we all talked about was counties don't have ordinances. We don't have, and I, I, they were all very impressed with our cemetery map. They're all very interested in, um, having some control over their cemeteries. Some of them have a county commission like we do. Some of them only have trustees, um, who take care of, like we used to. But they're all interested in making sure that the methods and the, um, and the, the control of how, how their cemetery is cared for. Um, they'd like to have an ordinance. So maybe if we, if we get ours done right the first time, um, we can serve as kind of a model for them too. And I know Jamie Reader at State DNR is working on a state manual. Um, he sent. He sent me the one that Maryland, the state of Maryland uses, and he's, he's working on that. But what we need is to, is to work with Jeff and cover all the bases. Right now, are there two cemeteries we can, where things are being done? Right now, in two of our, our cemeteries that belong to the county, we've had someone come in and use methods that are not approved, not approved by, by the federal, or the state, or us, and, and it essentially runs the markers. It, it does irreparable harm to them, and we need a way to put a stop to that legally, and, and just preserve what we have. Because like I've, I've said before in front of the commissioners, genealogy and history, they say are, are the most, the quickest-growing hobby in, in the country. We have people who come here from all over to, to visit our cemeteries, because we were here before so many of those other states. So, we just think it's imperative that this happen, and that we all work on it together, get it so that it has some teeth, and so that we can get it out to the public, what can and cannot happen in a cemetery, so.
I think it's a really, really, really good version. I don't know, I don't know if you drafted it, or if you had, you know, if you had somebody from the state, or somebody else helping you.
Jared started it, and I, and then we all worked together and corrected some of the...
Well, good for you guys, it looks like a lawyer drafted it, so good work.
Oh, well, would you like to hire us?
A couple of things I would, I would just note to kind of look at, Section 4, General Preservation and Protection, the livestock protection, as far as requiring fencing and all of that, to me, that's a zoning issue, and we'd have to have a zoning code amendment. And that's something that you could go to the APC and ask them to add to their zoning code, is that if you're adjacent, any property adjacent with livestock to it, Pioneer Cemetery has to have fencing. And I'm not familiar with what state law is, my guess is there's something along that line anyway, so this kind of might be a gun.
That comes from the code, yeah.
So, I probably would take out one, and then I would probably take out two. So, Section 4 is the only one I'm really kind of having any kind of heartburn about. In reason, Section 2, it's, that's already going to be a crime, and I wouldn't worry about civil penalties, if, if any of those things happened, I'd have the, we'd go through the Sheriff's Department, and then have the prosecutor prosecute those issues, and that's your best way to, you're not spending money on lawyers, and you're going after them, and they're usually going to have to pay some type of restitution as part of a diversion, or as part of probation. So, I, I would probably personally get rid of Section 4, and I don't think I'd make a ton of tweaks elsewhere. Fine-wise, we'll have to put notice in the paper, because we're, we would potentially be instituting a fine, and then I always, I don't know specifically in this situation, if we would have to have a public hearing, I'm going to advise you to have a public hearing anyway, just because whenever you're implementing something that some act causes fines, I like to have the public at least have the chance to talk to you about why they may not like that. And so I would go ahead and have a public hearing for that anyway, but other than that, it looks, I mean, it looks really good. I think, I think the biggest issue, or not the two I was talking about, the biggest issue is people coming in thinking they're doing well, or thinking they're doing the right thing, and they don't have a clue, and this requires them to get a permit before they can even start, and you guys verify that they're using acceptable procedures.
Yeah, and we're not against, if you want to come and clean your grandma's tombstone, and use water, and a, I mean, I, I keep water and brushes in my car all the time, and if you want to spray some water on it, and use a soft brush with no metal in the brush, clean it off, I keep barbecue skewers in, you know, and a, and an old toothbrush, and you'd be amazed what, what you can do with just plain water without, but the method that's being used is a drill, and, and brushes that have, that are, the bristles, have metal in the bristles. They're not really a metal brush, but there, there's metal infused in, in the brush, and it, I mean, I could take you to City Cemetery and show you tombstones that had lasted 120 years, until that method started to be used up there, and then it was culminated, but it wasn't just once, it was maybe every couple of years, and those are, some of them are virtually unreadable now, and it, it just can't go on. And, and we know of one contractor who does that, and has been asked not to do it, and just continues to. So, yeah, we can all work together, maybe you could come to our...
Yeah, I mean...
Our meeting?
Sure.
We meet the first Wednesday of the month at 9:00.
In the morning?
In the morning, yeah.
Well, no, that's better for me, I, I, I've got too many evening meetings, so...
I'm old, I, I can't stay up until 9:00 in the morning. But anyway, we meet at 9:00 over at the Cemetery Office in the January.
I'll see what I can make happen. And, and I think, I think if you talk to your board about Section 4, I don't, or, wait, what was it, Section I said was?
It's Section 4.
I don't think you're losing anything, not having that in there, I don't think it actually harms anything.
Well, I think it's actually in the state code.
About what?
That you can't, that you have to protect the cemetery from animals.
Yeah, I just don't know that we can do it as a county at this, at this component without changing the zoning ordinance.
Okay, and...
I'm not, I'm not saying it's not our, I think it's a hundred percent of the law, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any question whether somebody had their cow harm cemetery, they'd be, they'd be responsible for it. I just don't know whether we can double down on that with this ordinance.
Okay, well, and we're not...
Right.
We're not too bashful to go ask them, but, and I, I think this, probably the Section 2 is probably also in, in state codes.
Sure, yeah.
So, you know.
Right.
So, that's all, that's all we have, too. Do you have anything else to add?
No, Dale's getting ready, yes.
So, we, we agree that there is some refinement due yet in this...
Correct.
In this work.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I would, hopefully, if we're going to do this, you did it right the first time? You can?
Okay.
And Donna, if you don't mind, just refresh everybody, everyone's memories, how many Pioneer Cemeteries do we think are in the county right now that we know of?
Close to 100. I think dozens count, and 17, is that right?
I was thinking 16, but yeah, 16 or 17 that we know of.
And then there are several more that get done by volunteers.
Yeah.
We own less now, though, correct?
I'm not sure.
Didn't we transfer those over, so we don't own those?
Oh, those, yeah.
Yeah, so we might own even less now.
Oh, yeah, we, we own, well, on the record, we own a portion of four other cemeteries that had their own associations, but we took care of that.
Well, those weren't, so those weren't Pioneer, that's right, those were still active, still active cemeteries.
You guys usurped other people's.
But believe it or not, in recent years, we have discovered at least, I think, three cemeteries that no, no one knew anything about.
Yeah.
Until recently, so...
Yeah, because as I, as I research one Pioneer Cemetery, and try to clear up those records, I'm looking all the time through the old, because death records didn't start until 1900. So, in the 1800s, say I'm looking for somebody who's buried at Knoll Town, and, and I'm going through the old newspaper records. Well, I find his neighbor died, well, where, what happened to her? Well, then you look her up, and it, it'll say, well, she was buried with her husband in the family cemetery on the farm. So, you know that there's a family cemetery there, and you know she and her husband are there, but you don't know, and I can look back and see where their farm was, but I have no way of knowing on that 80 or 160 acres where those graves are. So, we have a lot of those, just little family plots that we can't, we can't identify. But we're working on it, and we're trying to get property owners to, to be aware of what, you know, if you find a patch of, of pine trees, or cedar trees, or a certain flower on your land, there's an indication that that might be where that family is. So, you know, so we're working on it, slow but sure.
Well, stay in touch with us as you work on this.
Well, we'll meet with Jeff, and...
And you guys are welcome to call my office instead of the meeting, and just come over, and we'll just kind of get stuff squared away as well.
Okay.
I don't, there's not a ton of tweaks in this, honestly, Donna. I just want to make sure I get the right intent of what you guys want, which I think is pretty clear in this, as long as we're stopping the behavior we want to stop, which I think more than anything is people coming to, maybe the people thinking they're doing right or not doing right, so...
Yeah, and, and we need owners to understand that, I think it's in the, I don't know if we've put it in here, but in state law, if you own a parcel of land, and it, and it has a Pioneer Cemetery on it, you are required to let, to, to set aside three days a year when the families of, of those pioneers can come and visit, and you have to provide them a right of way.
That's interesting. So, are genealogy folks, do they get that same access, or is it only for, for family descendants?
I think it says family members.
It says family members.
But, but, you know, that's, that's a requirement, and, and giving the, you know, giving people a right of way to it is, you, you just have to do that, and that's only right, I mean, you know. And on a lighter note, we've ordered the first batch of, you know, I, we came and asked for permission for signs, name signs at, at several of the Pioneer Cemeteries, and we've, for some reason, the state only wants to process those in fives, we have 15, so we, we've sent them the first five ready to process, and tourism will pay for that, and then, and then we got a grant from the foundation, and they, we've started the work out at Union, as far as the trees are cut, I don't know, have you been out there to see if the fence is up?
Just when the trees were cut, that's the only time I've stopped now.
So, but we have a contractor who's going to fence back up, so we are little by little making baby steps in, in approving those cemeteries, so.
Do you have the, I don't have any idea what 15, you said 15 Pioneer that you all are responsible for?
Yeah, I, I'd have to...
It would be good to know what those are, but I'm just thinking of the Wright family one, is that one or not?
I don't know, just Wright, I can't remember if Wright belongs to us or not, but...
That would have been a good one that had a sign on it, you know?
Yeah, well, we're starting with the on, the roadside ones, and then we'll try to work our way to the ones that, but that one, we could put one down by the road, and, you know, because we have several that are back in the middle of fields, so.
Yeah, our family has one, Brett's family.
Yeah, so, well...
Okay.
I guess we're, that's all we need, so we'll be in touch with you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, the last couple of years, we have allowed for a Christmas holiday luncheon, and closed courthouse for two hours to do that. Now, we want to allow that again this year?
It hasn't been approved.
Second plan.
Okay, we have a motion, Dale, second, by Tracy, to allow the courthouse to close to the public from 12:00 noon until 2:00 PM on December the 17th, for the courthouse Christmas party and luncheon. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. We'll have to send out the invites now. Okay, now, we have a couple of fellows here today representing the local union at the Highway Department, and you guys are probably wanting to know when we can meet.
Looking for a date.
Their contract expires December 31st.
Well, we agreed to extend that out, if you remember, because you guys could never get the budget numbers in in time, so I think we verbally agreed to the end of January, which we could write that up and get that formalized, but, which we should do here before the end of the year. So, if we can meet, I know the times are, we're constricted in December and November, but if we can do something early part of January, we'd be much appreciated.
Well, what's your availability, or are you able to...
When you give me a date and time, I'll be here.
Okay.
Unless I have something that's new to our, I don't know.
And I, I'm, I'm sorry, I know you're Jeff Stinson, and then, what's your name here?
Lance Lakes.
Lance Lakes, okay. I've seen your name, I haven't met you before. So, you're the Union Stewart now?
Yeah.
The Alex Lakes? That's good, nice to meet you.
I have no objection to doing something in December, I mean, the earlier you get started on it, the better.
I guess pick, pick it up, I'll just go with it.
Anything white, any other white day works for me.
Well, we don't want to use our meeting days, so, see, that day would be out, and the 16th would be out.
I don't care. You want first of December, or toward the end of December, middle, what works for you guys?
I can do the first week of December any day. First that one bad.
How about the second week?
I got negotiations with Louis Baker on that one, so, that's what we talk. I will try, what are you guys thinking, what day?
I can do the third, yeah, lost it. Third, or the fifth, I can't. December 3rd works for me.
Not for me, I'm at the conference.
Okay. How about the third week? We're on our roll.
I can do it the 25th.
That'll work.
Screwed.
I'll bring presents, I'm kidding, I'm open.
What do you have that week before Christmas?
Preferably the 27th, I'm a better guess.
I do that.
22nd, you say, preferably?
20, Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
We're rolling in the holiday there.
Okay.
22nd.
December 22nd?
That works for me. What time are you guys thinking?
What works for you?
Uh, no, earlier than 9:00, other than that, I can get down, it's a three and a half hour drive from you.
10:00?
10:00 works?
Interesting.
Thank you, guys, we appreciate it.
Okay, December 22, 10:00 AM?
Unless it's snowing.
Less weather.
Everybody in agreement on that?
We will, I will send it out, we will meet them in it, so... We will, I will send it out, we will meet them in it, so, I believe that is lost, so I'll send out an email, he'll be here.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Is there any patron concerns in the room today? Derek, you haven't said a word.
I don't need to. I guess we do.
Perry, you?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Well, all that leaves on our agenda then is approval of claims and payroll.
With approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes. Okay, that concludes our agenda for today. Take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn by Dale, second by Tracy, all in favor? We adjourn, thank you all very much.